Okay, this public hearing of the Baltimore County Council will now come to order. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kathy Bevins and I am the Chair for the County Council and I also represent the 6th District. I welcome you to this public hearing on the proposed 6th District zoning map. As with our legislative sessions, work sessions and public hearings since the COVID-19 pandemic began, we are convening this public hearing virtually via WebEx video teleconference. I would like to introduce my colleagues this evening. Councilman Tom Cork, who represents the 1st District.
Good evening.
Councilman Izzy Patoka, who represents the 2nd District.
Hello, everybody.
Councilman Wade Catch, who represents 3rd District.
Good afternoon.
Councilman Julian Jones, who represents the 4th District. Julian, are you with us?
Apparently, he was on and he's not here.
Okay, okay. Maybe he'll be back. Maybe it's just a brief break. Councilman David Marks, who represents the 5th District. David, I can't... Can anybody else hear David? Because I can't.
He indicated to me that his speaker is still not working.
Phone now, David, and I still can't hear you. Can anyone hear David?
I think he has his phone also, Madam Chair, and with everybody that's on the hearing, it's going to take me a minute to even find him to unmute him.
Okay, David Marks. Good evening, everyone. And he's waving. And Councilman Todd Crandall, who represents the 7th District.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
A copy of the recommended map and log of issues with Planning Board recommendations is posted on the county's website at www.baltimorecountymd.gov/agency/planning/czmp. This hearing is one of seven scheduled public hearings during the month of June concerning the proposed 2020 comprehensive zoning map. Tonight's hearing will be dealing exclusively with possible changes to the 7th... I mean, I'm sorry, the 6th District zoning map as recommended to the County Council by the Planning Board. The hearing procedures before the County Council are posted on the virtual meetings page of the County Council's website and the Council's Facebook page and are as follows. Anyone wishing to testify should have registered with the County Council in advance via email. Documents could also be attached to this email. This registration enables the council staff to recognize the person and unmute their microphones so they can speak during the video hearing. Speaker registration via email commenced on today's date from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. In order to testify, a person must join this WebEx event with an Internet compatible device because it's not possible to identify a person who uses a phone only to listen in during the hearing. Each person testifying at the hearing will be given three minutes to speak. The purpose of this time limitation is not to restrict public input, but rather to ensure that everyone who has signed up to address us this evening has the opportunity to do so. The order of the testimony will be based on the time a person's email was received for the hearing. Only persons who registered to testify via email will be permitted to speak. In fairness to everyone who properly registered, when a person has concluded their remarks, the host of the meeting, our Council Administrator, Chris Fel Castro, will mute their microphone and the next person's name will be called and their microphone will be unmuted. And they will be asked to give their remarks. And the process will continue until all persons who registered to testify have an opportunity to speak. In fairness to all persons and to expedite the meeting, it is requested that repetitive comments on the same issue not be given. If someone before you has presented very similar testimony, you may simply comment on your concerns that have been previously raised and waive your time. I'd like to add, we have 14 speakers registered this evening. Before we begin, I would like to just take a moment for some personal remarks since these are issues in the 6th District. I take this process very seriously. I walk the properties, I meet with property owners and the community and individuals. For the 2020 czmp process, we have 44 issues raised. Fifteen of those issues I raised myself. This czmp process is so vitally important to maintain a balance of open space, preservation, business and community. Without strong businesses in our area, communities don't thrive, and without strong communities, our businesses don't thrive. So it's finding a balance within this process. I thank everybody for attending tonight, those who are listening at home and registered. And Ms. Fel Castro, who is our first speaker.
Madam Chair, our first speaker was Linda Yelp. Unfortunately, she has not logged on, so I will go to our second speaker while I'll keep an eye out for her, who is Arthur Sutherland.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes. You need to give me your testimony. Are you there, Mr. Sutherland? I'm sorry, are you there, Mr. Sutherland?
I'm here.
Okay, you may begin.
Yes, thank you. My name is Arthur Sutherland. My wife, Mary Sutherland, and my two minor children reside with me at 6709 Lockraven Boulevard. Today, I am speaking in opposition to the petition for reclassification filed by Darrell Knau. The lead petitioner, Mr. Knau, who lives at 6713 Lockraven Boulevard, seeks to change the current zoning of DR 55. My opposition holds whether the potential change from DR 55 is through ROA, as the planning staff recommended, or to RO, as the petitioner seeks. Either change is wrong and bad. 6707, 6709, 6711, 6713, 6801 are all single-family homes built by the same developer in the 1950s. The Council should deny the change for the following reasons. First, the change should not be granted because only 6801 Lockraven meets the conditions required in Section 202.3(c)(2b). Parking shall be set back at least 10 feet from the property line. The driveways and parking pad for the houses in question are all hard up against their respective property lines, with the exception of 68801. The 10-foot buffer does not exist. In addition, 6711 Lockraven and 6713 Lockraven, neither one of those houses conformed to Section 409 in terms of space required for parking and access. A professional boundary survey is attached to my letter and conclusively refused the petitioner's request. Second, my house, 6709 and 6711, share a common driveway. This presents a danger to my children. Third, when Mr. Knau contends that the properties are "exceedingly difficult to rent," this is playing a little fast and footless with the facts. Both 6711 and 6713 have had tenants. Mr. Knau, 6713, had tenants as recently as three months ago, and he told me this face-to-face. Even more troubling is the fact that no advertiser can be found that offers either home for rent and no MRS rental listing for either property exists in the available databases. This raises serious doubts about the extent and scope of their efforts to rent their homes. Fourth, the zoning code in Section 402.2 reads, "It's intended that the buildings and uses in RO zones shall not intrude upon or disturb present or prospective uses of nearby residential property." Mr. Knau's petition does not adequately address this key part of the law. In fact, the obvious disturbance and intrusion is soft pedaled. For example, he does not recognize that because Lockraven Boulevard does not permit street parking, the daily parade of UPS, FedEx and USPS trucks that will be coming down the driveway to my home is scary and prohibitive. Finally, Attorney Alderman's letter on behalf of Mr. Knau to the Planning Board rightly points out that his client's properties act as a buffer to the residential community to the east, but my house lies to the south, and nothing is going to shield my property from this change. I've attached a petition signed by nearly 50 citizens, the majority of whom live in or next to my Homeowners Association, and I beseech the Council to deny the request for this unneeded and poorly argued zoning change. I am certain that your denial will be prompted by your good common sense, dedication to justice and sworn commitment to the safety and well-being of all county residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next speaker, Ms. Fel Castro.
Our next speaker is Mary Sutherland. Sutherland?
Yes, hello. This is Mary Sutherland.
You may begin your testimony.
Yes. My family has greatly enjoyed the beauty of our home and its surrounding grounds for seven years. We spend considerable time in our yard and driveway, raised bed gardening, morning yoga, playing games and sports. This is truly our sanctuary. Our children are getting older now, and so we are giving them more time and independence outdoors. However, they are still at a vulnerable age. The properties do not have fences to divide them. A change in zoning would negatively affect our home life because our driveway and the driveway at 6711 are connected. There would be an increased concern about our children's safety while playing on the driveway and in the yard. Increased automobile traffic is an immediate threat to our children. This is why the county requires a 10-foot safety zone between residences. In addition to this, we have numerous friends with school-aged children who enjoy visiting us and playing in our yard and driveway. I personally was hit by a car at the same age as my son. It resulted in broken bones and several months of hospitalization and recovery. Having a business in driveway less than 10 feet away from our property would greatly impede our freedom to enjoy our property. Our neighbor claims that the houses are difficult to rent. We know for a fact that is not true. Mr. Knau has had tenants recently, and it appears that there is a gentleman living there with him now. The owner of 6711 had renters in her home prior to our home purchase in 2013. In 2019, we asked about renting the property for my elderly parents. The owner did not respond to our overture. Therefore, I am doubtful about how serious she is about renting the house. This would be an incursion also into the neighborhood. There is no on-street parking on the stretch of Lockraven Boulevard. Once you get past the Sudsfield Laundry at 6811, there is no business parking or commercial signage. The speed limit on our stretch of the road is 40 miles per hour. However, many motorists drive much faster. People coming in from outside the neighborhood to visit this business would be unfamiliar about how soon they would need to slow down and brake to turn into the driveway. As a result, there would be a possibility of numerous rear-end collisions and motorists driving into our driveway because they are confused about which property is the business. With the business next door, we would therefore have to be increasingly cautious on our own property throughout the day to avoid the dangers of unexpected motorists coming into the driveway. I appeal to the county to reject the petitioner's request. This will not improve the quality of life for most residents on this block. The right decision is to keep the zoning as it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Ms. Fel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Melissa Davis. Davis, you want?
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I'm going to go. Good evening. My name is Melissa Davis and I represent the community of Overly, where I am a resident, homeowner and Vice President of our very active Neighborhood Association. Overly is a great place to live, full of historic working-class housing. We have houses and trees that are over 100 years old and schools that have served generations of residents, a growing seasonal farmer's market and a diverse community of committed and active neighbors. We are especially proud of the shopping district along Bel Air Road, which is also home to the Natural History Society of Maryland. The Overly Community Association unequivocally supports the downzoning of the Overly properties specified in Issues Number 6-030, 6-034 and 6-037. These are located on the 6900 Block of Bel Air Road at Taylor Park on Taylor Avenue across the street from the Maryland School for the Blind and the 6800 Block of Bel Air Road. Additionally, we want the MC overlay placed on the Taylor Park property to preserve the land from any development. In the interest of preserving the character of our neighborhood, the Overly Community Association asks that these properties be preserved for their original use by removing the zoning and CCC overlay that allows for large apartment-style developments and similar projects. High-density housing would not be supported by our neighborhood's existing infrastructure, and it would further burden our already overcrowded schools. Moreover, this type of development is not supported by the vast majority of our community. I'd especially like to mention that the Overly Community Association took a vote of its due-paying members and voted overwhelmingly against the proposal of a 70-unit housing development on the 6900 Block of Bel Air Road, those properties. Instead, we'd like to see that space house small shops and other creative micro-businesses consistent with Overly's historic character. To our understanding, downzoning would not affect the current use of the properties. In other words, it would not change how they're currently being used, but it will prevent development that would be out of character for our community. Our community is committed to pursuing and supporting responsible development that maintains Overly's historic neighborhood charm. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Melissa.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Bob Bendler. Mr. Bendler?
I'm here.
You may begin your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Robert Bendler, and I am the President of the Essex-Middle River Civic Council. This organization filed Issue 6-004 requesting RCA zoning for the 450-acre Lafarge Quarry site. Our 20-plus-member community associations strongly feel that development of this site is a dangerous threat to the quality of life of area residents. The gross inadequacy of the road network, the serious environmental concerns, and the current major influx of mixed-use development in the area are basic to our concerns. The need identified in the 2020 master plan, which led to suggesting intense mixed-use development at Lafarge, has been met and exceeded by Greenlee and Crossroads. Indeed, the development has restricted highway access to Route 43 for the Lafarge site that was envisioned in the 2020 master plan. In essence, development of the Lafarge site is no longer needed, justified or feasible. The site was originally a natural forest. It served Lafarge's purpose of mining out its natural resources. It should now be returned to its original condition, thus the request for RCA. Is this excessive and unreasonable? Not in our minds, because it seems to be the right thing to do for our residents' well-being, the protection of the environment, and the fulfillment of the county executive's greening of Baltimore County initiative. Should be noted that this site is adjacent to the urban rural demarcation line and is surrounded by the county coastal rural legacy district. Councilwoman Bevins has previously stated that no residential should be allowed at this site. Thank you. We believe that, given the dramatic changes in the Middle River area, in this area of Middle River, most would agree that further study and planning is needed before any intense and irreversible development takes place. Such study and planning is about to occur. It is the 2030 master plan, soon to be started just after the czmp concludes. Grinning RCA will stop development, not preempt, the sound planning and analysis that needs to take place to make the right decision on this issue. The alternative to this could be the application of RCA III, which basically does just that. It defers development pending proper study and planning. It was not available to us as an option. Maybe it's available as an option to you. Please consider this, and we appreciate your time and efforts in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Bendler.
You're more than welcome.
Ms. Fel Castro, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Richard Kraus. Mr. Kraus?
Yes?
You may begin your testimony.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Richard Kraus. I live at 7824 Oakley Road with my wife Suzanne. I'm speaking on behalf of 33 neighbors relative to Issue 6-024. We also submitted to you a petition opposing a zoning change at 1801 Taylor Avenue that would allow a 24-hour farm store/gas station. The massive complex would encompass the entire block and would not be compatible with local businesses and residents. We ask that you review our petition and deny the request to rezone. Briefly, here are some of our reasons. The infrastructure will not support heavy traffic because Taylor Avenue and Oakley Road are both single lanes each way with one traffic light at the intersection. Businesses would suffer because people would avoid the area, not wanting to attend or to contend with the heavy traffic. The 24-hour lighting and noise of the farm store/gas station would be intrusive to residents and businesses. Storm runoff and gas spills would be washed into Herring Run Stream, and the pollution would ultimately spill into the bay. Trash and debris is a constant problem because of businesses currently in the area, and it would be exacerbated along with the increased rat population. The farm store would be a new source of crime like robberies and shoplifting, which have occurred in the past in the following places, such as Casimilla's Sub Shop was robbed several times. Mr. Pappas was robbed and beaten in front of his restaurant. There was a stabbing in front of Maria's Sub Shop and a homicide that took place at the Dunkin' Donuts by shooting. I appreciate your time, and we urgently request that you read our petition and consider our concerns in making your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Kraus. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Alan Robertson.
I'm here.
Mr. Robertson?
I'm here. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, sir. You may begin your testimony.
Okay, I'm Alan Robertson of 1608 Holly Tree Road. I'm representing the Bullies Quarters Community Association, and I wanted to speak on several issues, the first of which was Issue 035 for 3643 Bay Drive. We strongly agree with the RCA five change that's being requested, and we believe that matches the waterfront in most of this area. And it's an issue that we had fought for four years ago, and we feel strongly this should be approved this time. The concern I have is that there should be a resolution associated with it because it's my understanding that the owners have gone for a subdivision request, and we want to make sure that this zoning overshoots or oversets any prior approval for that site. Another issue we have in this area is Issue 009 for the SS Marina Houses on Chester Road. We disagree with the BMB because it's not a boatyard. The BMF is a marina, but we suggest BMYC because they seem to be using this more for restaurants, a club, and they are looking at some type of residential use or rentals. So we think the BMYC is the most appropriate. I also want to mention that in Issue 004, strongly agree with Bob Bendler. That area should be returned back to the density that it was originally, which was partially outside the Urkel and forested and should capture water runoff because of all the massive development that has already been built in that area and is still being planned for that section of Baltimore County. This area also has water that runs off over on the Eastern Avenue during heavy thunderstorms, and any overdevelopment of that area would tend to increase that and affect the traffic along Eastern Avenue more frequently. Our other issue we wanted to talk about was the CP Crane Power Plant, Issue 0026. We are against the MH zoning. We would suggest that any area beyond the Urkel that's located more than 150 or 200 feet away from the plant itself be rezoned RCA 50. And the recommendations have been to leave the RCA V and the RCA 20 zoning in place. We would agree with that, but if you do change it, I would suggest just looking inside the Urkel and making it density for single-family homes such as DR 1 or DR 3.5. That would give the future owners some development rights, but keeping it where it belongs, and that will create a buffer from the intense development in Carrollwood away from the area out on the peninsula that is surrounded on three sides by water. Any residential zoning should be kept at least 1,000 feet away from the border. We have way too much development in the Middle River area. Too much is already approved, and it's causing problems and issues with the schools, the roads, and the natural resources. With this, I'll probably also document it and send in a letter so that you have documentation on these four issues.
Thank you, Alan.
Given me the time to speak.
Thank you for your testimony, Alan. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Pamela Clark. Clark?
Yes.
You may begin your testimony.
All right, thank you. Let's see, so I'm here along with Arthur and Mary Sutherland to speak about 6-013, houses on Lockraven Boulevard. I don't want to try not to repeat anything that Arthur and Mary said, so hopefully I will not. But my husband and I, George Aide and I, have lived in that house for over 20 years. And before that, I drove by those houses almost every single day of my life because I lived just down the street in the city and always wanted to live in one of those houses. Those houses are well-known by people in the county. If you mention anything about the Stone House on Lockraven, everyone knows them. So to take them and turn them into some form of business, a commercial property, a law firm, whatever, just wouldn't be right. We have a wonderful community association, and a large number of our neighbors live directly behind us. They would, of course, be impacted by anything done to the houses on Lockraven. There is already a ton of commercial space around the area, so to say that we need more just seems ridiculous. Much of what we have in the Hillendale Shopping Plaza, the Lockraven Shopping Plaza, and the other two shopping complexes right there, a lot of small businesses, a lot of which right now are shuttered because of the pandemic, and it's unlikely that they will reopen. I don't think that we need to put any more commercial businesses in there at this point in time. This issue, this is probably the third time since we've lived in our house that this issue has come up, always brought up by the same people, and I honestly don't understand the push. Those houses on Lockraven South, there's a few that have sold over the last few years, so that's not a great argument, as long as you're visible and you're asking price. Several of them, as Arthur noted, have been rented. One of the houses was rented for several years after they first moved out, so I know they had the motive to rent these houses. And I think it's just, it's a shame, given the effort that the people along Lockraven, with few exceptions, have put into those houses. My husband and I have done a ton of landscaping. We have a huge pond in the back and a patio, and Arthur and Mary have a beautiful vegetable garden. It's just a shame that all of a sudden people think we need more businesses in there and we don't. The other issue with the businesses that we have already with all the shopping plazas is crime. We constantly have helicopters flying over, and it's all due to crime in the areas above often. I know that the street behind us has a lot of people fleeing from the police into their street, into their street. So for me, this is just a horrible idea. I think we need more homes for people and not more businesses. There are tons and tons of businesses in the area. There's a couple malls up the street. As I said, there's the shopping centers. I just think this is a foolish plan, and I think it should just be, it should not happen, and it should be done once and for all. I thank you, all of you, for your time and for letting me ramble on for the time that I have.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Clark.
Will Mr. George Aide be testifying this evening?
No, I kind of testified for both of us.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I did not see him on the attendee list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Kaitlin Clem Kelner.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. My name is Kaitlin Clem, and I am President of the Lenovover Improvement Association, representing 1,400 households. We support the removal of the CCC overlay proposed by Councilwoman Bevins specifically for Issue 6-030.
specifically for issue 6-030, the 6900 block of Bel Air Road. In addition to the reasons brought up by Melissa Davis of the Overly Community Association, Linnover, along with our voting members at our last in-person general meeting, are concerned about what multifamily dwellings would do to Fullerton Elementary School. Fullerton has a capacity level of 463 students. Right now, it is at 617. That projection is only due to increase upwards of 645 students by 2024 without additional multifamily dwellings. In addition, they're getting an additional trailer next year. And also, the school recently tested positive for lead in the water system. So without any additional funding from the governor to help provide with additional schools or construction or improvements of our schools, having multifamily housing dwelling there would only create an additional negative impact of Fullerton. And for that reason, we support Councilwoman Bevins's removal of the CCC overlay. And with that, that is as simple as I have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your leadership, Kaitlyn.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Kathy Thompson. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, you may begin your testimony.
Good evening, Chairperson Bevins and members of the county council. My name is Kathy Thompson, and I'm president of the Hartford Park Community Association, representing nine hundred and eighty-four households in Parkville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of issue 6-031, the Hartford Park Hall, and in opposition to issue 6-024, the Royal Farm Store and Gas Station. The HPCA Board unanimously supports the issue 6-031, which would change zoning of the HPCA Hall to ROA. This zoning change is consistent with the residential character of the area and the Baltimore County Master Plan. We're asking that you approve this zoning request as it would allow our community association to generate income from the top floor of the hall while retaining the lower floor for community use and events. Such income is vital to our ability to keep and maintain the hall, which incurs a minimum of $7,000 of expenses annually, not including any necessary capital improvements or major repairs. This hall has been an important part of the fabric of Hartford Park since 1944. It has hosted Halloween parties and Easter egg hunts, community meetings and candidate forums, babysitter and baby showers. Generations of residents have enjoyed activities and events, met their neighbors, and worked together to improve their neighborhood and their community in this special place. We have found it increasingly difficult to generate the income necessary to maintain the hall and need this zoning change to allow us to pursue an additional revenue stream from building use that would be compatible with the character of the neighborhood. We do not want to have to sell this building, and we hope to keep it available for future generations to enjoy. Regarding issue 6-024, the HPCA Board unanimously opposes this zoning request, and all community feedback received at our February general meeting was similarly opposed. We're requesting that you not approve this zoning request for the Royal Farm Store and Gas Station at 1801 Taylor Avenue because it would have a detrimental and irreversible impact on our residential neighborhood. We find this proposal to be unacceptable for the location due to concerns over the size of the project, the impact on traffic, the pollution and trash it would generate, and the 24-hour service it would provide. The scale of this proposed development greatly exceeds the size of the existing businesses and homes in the area, and as such, is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. A business aside, this size would significantly increase traffic in an area already prone to backups due to its proximity to the intersection with Herring Parkway. Bordering residential streets such as Beverly Avenue would receive an influx of traffic from customers trying to avoid backups and traffic lights. As a 24-hour business, this would increase noise, light, pollution, trash, and crime. Lastly, there are environmental concerns related to the siting of this project. Due to how close it is to Herring Run, we are concerned about runoff of grease, gas, and oil that could impair water quality, threat from underground storage tanks that is posed to water sources, and this lot with such a large footprint would really increase the impervious surfaces, which would impede the county's ability to meet their TMDL targets for reductions in sediment, nitrogen, and phosphorus pollution. We have submitted these comments in writing, including the names of the remaining board members. Thank you for this opportunity to express our concerns and support.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Doug, and I hope I'm saying this right, Legum?
That's correct.
Are you there, sir?
Yes.
Okay, you may begin your testimony.
The proposed zoning would be in character with other zoning in the area, notably the mall across the street. I hope there's no opposition, so I'm gonna stop.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Patricia Jefferson.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you may begin.
Hi, I registered to speak issue 6-023 and 6-020. However, we've resolved the issue today, and so I have no comment on those two issues.
Awesome, thank you, Patricia.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, Madam Chair, is Chris Mudd.
I'm here.
Okay, you may begin your testimony.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. I am going to yield my time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, I have one more speaker who did an early registration. However, they did not register during the registration time that was designated, so I'm gonna find out if this person does in fact want to testify, and this will be our last speaker this evening.
Sure, okay, ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Did you want to testify this evening?
No, ma'am, thank you very much. Melissa Davis testified on behalf of my community, I appreciate it.
No problem. Madam Chair, that is all the speakers this evening.
Okay, that concludes the CZMP hearing for the sixth district. I'd like to thank all my colleagues for sitting in, and I'd also like to thank all the listeners and the folks that took the time to testify. It's not an easy process. At the end of the CZMP process, there's always somebody that may not be happy, and that's what makes it such a difficult process for the council. But we do spend a lot of time and energy looking at every single issue that comes before us. So I want to thank you for your time. Mr. Secretary, our next meeting is?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, our next CZMP hearing will be this Thursday, June 11th, at 4:00 p.m. Same registration process that you've now stated several times, and this will be Mr. Clark's district one hearing. Thank you.
Okay, I look forward to seeing everyone on the 11th.
Thank you.
And stay safe.
Thank you, Madam Chair.